The Hammond City Council will not from the order to expand the board.
I want to ask of a special friend of my family that lost in the homicide of my nephew.
Carmen roll call.
Markovich?
Chair.
Vitali?
Here.
Vines?
Here.
Kalwinski?
Here.
Yulaki?
Here.
Higgs?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Inahosa?
Here.
Oh Pinker.
Here. All members present. Moving on to reading minutes.
President.
Councilman Patel.
Most of the accepted men from June eight, two thousand and fifty.
Most of my councilmen, the majority second by councilman Emerson to accept the minutes from last meeting.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes pass. Moving on to approval of claims.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich. Move for approval of claim due third of June seventeenth for council meetings June twenty-second. Beginning with claim date at six fifteen fifteen and ending with claim date at six seventeen fifteen. Claim number three two five one through claim number three five seven five for two million eight hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and twelve cents by sole. Most of my councilmen.
Markovich second by Councilman Higgs to accept the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on accepting the claims? Carmen roll call vote on the acceptance of the claims.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Yulaki?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Claims pass, nine zero. Moving on to public hearing. First public hearing of the evening will be ordinance fifteen twenty-one. Appropriation Police Department, fifty-six thousand, two hundred dollars and forty-eight cents. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich. You have a public hearings from A through D. Might want to list all A through D if anybody wants to speak on any one of them. I think you do so at this time, so I take that individually. That's good point. We also have fifteen twenty-four vacating a portion of one hundred and tenth between Fifth Avenue and Indianapolis Boulevard. Also fifteen twenty-five vacating a portion of Public Alley between one hundred and fourteenth and Staten. And the final one, fifteen twenty-six, vacating a portion of Fifth Avenue between one hundred and twelfth and Indianapolis Boulevard.
Anyone wishing to speak on any of these matters, please come forward.
My name is George Stoya for the fourteenth and Stanton. I wanted to, I guess, offer some comment on fifteen twenty-five. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Dan Turst and Luke Oil for his candor, his clarifications, and just his overall being communicative. Anyway, I had some questions about, about the current one-way that exists in the alleyway heading north from the, from that heading, the alleyway heading north behind the current liquor store is one-way heading north. And I was concerned that it remained that way. I was, I've been informed and I take it to be reliable pursuant to these plans and. Mr. Turstman's presentations that it will remain in one-way to the extent plans in any area deviate from that standard I have. I hereby remonstrate and object to them, but other than that, because I live there and it creates a traffic hazard. As I explained to Mr. Turstman and my emails were courtesy copied to stand to stotany, so I guess to some, to some extent it's a public record. Anyway, everything is as planned here. I'm good with it. I just wanted to go on the record, just in case if there's a change, that I would be opposed to it with respect to removing the one-way. And making the alleyway running parallel to one hundred and fourteenth Avenue more or less an adjunct of the project and/or of Indianapolis Boulevard or an extension of it at a perpendicular forty-five degree or forty-five degree angle. So, anyway, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on either of the ordinances, fifteen twenty-one, fifteen twenty-four, fifteen twenty-five, or fifteen twenty-six? Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Moving on to communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
See the card from Dallas Crayton Jr. Just to councilman here, your thoughtful concern to our family means a great deal to, from the family of Robert Crayton. Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce breakfast with DP Friday, June twenty-six, twenty fifteen at the Dynasty Banquet. DP review of World Energy Breakfast, eight AM, presentation eight thirty, DM cost fifteen dollars. Reservation for this event are required to make sure a reservation. Make a reservation, please call Lakeshore Chamber office at two one nine ninety-one, one thousand.
Any other communications?
President.
Councilman Patel.
Hammond City Council will be sending a letter to prosecutors on a murder or suspected murder.
Punishment for, toward the railroad for blocking all the crossings.
You make an appeal from all here?
Yes. Correct. Thank you.
Normally I go on a round of friends business.
You're right.
Do that on a round of friends business. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Legacy Foundation, Lake County Community Foundation says June eighteen, twenty fifteen. Mister Anthony Gates, Sheriff's District Councilman, thank you so much for your gift of fifty dollars to attach your missing rail scholarship.
Together, we are transforming Lake County and we have a value of partnerships in our effort. If we do not have your email address, please consider going on our website to sign up updates of legacy activities. We, we don't want you to miss out on the timely topics to inform you of our exciting programs we are offering and up-to-date charitable news you know, you should know. Thank you for allowing us to provide stewardship of your charitable dollars. We appreciate the trust that you have placed with Legacy. Sincerely, Carolyn Saxton, President.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports. Any committee reports? Councilman Inahosa.
Hold be bringing out fifteen twenty, fifteen twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Panaz.
And Community and Crime Watch would like to make some announcements. The Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will have their meeting on Tuesday, June thirtieth at the American Legion on Goslin beginning at six thirty PM. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, July ninth at the Calumet College, room two hundred at six thirty PM. The Crime Watch meetings are a little sparse during the summer because the schools are closed. So, if you have any questions or concerns in your neighborhood, you are more than welcome to attend any of the Crime Watch meetings. Because that is how change happens, one person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Also, I would like to announce that the Community and Crime Watch groups are in the midst of planning National Night Out, which will be held Tuesday, August fourth at the Wolf Lake Splash Pad from five to eight PM. We are in the midst of making final arrangements and will have flyers available within the next week or so, so please be on the lookout. Our charity of choice this year is Greater Hammond Community Services. Anyone who brings a canned good, can of beans, can of corn, whatever, as a donation will receive, once again, a free hot dog, chips, and pop. And, and you'll be able to enjoy the evening. So, mark your calendar, Tuesday, August fourth, five to eight PM at the Wolf Lake Splash Pad. Thank you very much.
Councilman Kowinski.
I believe we have a report that bringing out fifteen dash twenty-six, which should be.
Yes, that's correct, Councilman. Any other committee reports? Committee reports are not closed. Our ordinance third final passage.
Fifteen twenty, an ordinance creating a new fund for the city of Hammond for purposes of appropriating a crash reduction grant.
Mister President.
Councilman Patel.
This is a grant from the state to help control the Westway.
The total amount was fifty-six thousand, two hundred point forty-eight cents. This starts effective June first, two thousand and fifteen, effective through August second, two thousand and fifteen.
Any other discussion?
Mister President.
Councilwoman Panaz.
I do believe we need to ask for final message.
That's correct.
Final passage fifteen dash twenty.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Patel, second by Councilwoman Panaz, our final passage of fifteen twenty, is there any discussion? Carmen roll call on fifteen twenty.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Yulaki?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Fifteen twenty passes, nine zero.
Fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Crash Reduction Grant Fund.
President.
Councilman Patel.
Final passage of fifteen twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by. Final passage of the Councilman Patel, second by Councilman Kowinski, is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Patel.
It's also a link back to fifteen dash twenty.
Also, the state may conduct a onsite monitoring review while this project is in effect. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call on fifteen twenty-one.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Yulaki?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Ordinance fifteen twenty-one passes, nine zero.
Fifteen twenty-three, ordinance authorizing the city of Hammond, Indiana to issue its Economic Development Revenue Bonds, Siri twenty fifteen, through Port Intermodal Projects and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Panaz.
The ordinance provided passage of fifteen twenty-two with an extended. To consider on July thirteenth.
No, we're on fifteen twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Mister President.
Councilman Inahosa.
Yeah, move for final passage of fifteen dash twenty.
Motion by Councilman Inahosa, second by Councilman Kowinski, for final passage of fifteen twenty-three, is there any discussion?
Mister President.
Councilman Inahosa.
Yeah, this, this site.
So everybody knows more or less where it's at. On Kennedy Avenue and Michigan Avenue where Central Rent-A-Cranes is, right behind there is where the Hammond Gun Range is. It's a site that's been vacated for a very long time. I can remember the site being BioGreen Campol site, which had a lot of smell going into the Hessville area, especially around Kennedy Avenue for a very far distance, and it made it miserable for a lot of people. I, if, I, I am for this project one hundred percent. I think it has, it has a lot of potential, I mean, just from what we heard. Phase one is going to employ about forty-nine jobs. Phase two.
It's going to employ an additional four hundred and fifty jobs. The, I think we have asked before about the entrance and exits for the site. I think it's going to be on Kennedy Avenue, right there by Central Rent-A-Cranes.
Sure, later down the line, there might be some complications as far as maybe putting a traffic light there on Michigan Avenue and Kennedy or something, but it's something that we can deal for, deal with. But the, the potential is there. I mean, if we don't move on this, I believe, I believe we heard that there was going to be a petroleum site that was going to come here. And I think something like this with Chuport Intermodal Project, I think it's, it's going to be a good company for good jobs in the city of Hammond. We have, we have some information that we got as far as what the jobs we're going to pay. The jobs for the people are going to be working there are going to start off at, it looks like twelve dollars an hour, going up to eighteen dollars an hour. Of course, the shift managers will be making more money, but there's potential for a lot of jobs in Hammond. If you look at companies like Jupiter Aluminum, they, they hire a lot of Hammond residents. One of the residents, one of the employees of Jupiter just moved right next to me. So, four hundred and fifty jobs plus the forty-nine existing, I mean, you're talking about five hundred jobs. I think it's good for Hammond, it's good for Hessville. If this, if this doesn't open up, I don't see another company coming here to that site again. But I welcome, I welcome this. We'll just, you know, as far as the traffic, we'll, we'll deal with that later. But I think this is, this is good and, and that's why I'm moving for final passage of fifteen dash twenty-three.
Any other discussion on fifteen twenty-three?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
In the caucus, they talked about that they were doing this partnership with another company. Is there anybody from another?
Other company here that's a representative of the, of the partnership with Intermodal?
That's Dhandel, Russell Millbrath.
Would you please come to the microphone and state that, please? Mister Chairman, suspension of the rule? Chairman, move for suspension of the rule?
There's a motion for suspension of the rules. Councilman Markovich, do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Rule suspended.
Mister Chairman, in a caucus, the name of another partner company was just mentioned instead of, I believe, to the whole city council. That was the first time we ever heard of this other company. So, my question is, is there anybody here representing that other company that's in partnership with Intermodal?
No.
We're here this evening on behalf of the entire development, excuse me, the, the other company Reliable Rail, as we told you in the caucus, is located in Florida. There, frankly, had been several occasions where that gentleman asked to come up here relative to redevelopment commission meetings and other onsite discussions, but he was unavailable for this evening.
Mister Chairman, during the caucus, questions were asked as far as jobs for Hammond people, and Intermodal was not able to substantiate jobs or percentage of anything. I guess that's the first time this council.
Has learned that they are going to be the ones that are going to be running this operation, and all you guys are property owners, I believe, and won't have nothing to do with the operations of that. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct at all. We will have, I'm their legal counsel, but they will have, both Russ Millbrath and Justin Murphy will have authority to engage in the operations and, in fact, have the controlling interest, I think.
Right.
And have the controlling interest.
So, again, like the question that was asked in caucus, does Intermodal, this other company, Railway, are they able to commit percentage of jobs for Hammond people?
Well, Councilman, I appreciate your question.
And the question is a legitimate one, because whenever a development comes into a community, obviously, the community hopes not only to benefit from the taxes that are generated and, and the people moving in and, but also generate from people who are in the community that, that work. It's, it's very difficult to make a commitment percentage-wise, so what I would refer the council to very quickly is what we committed to in the redevelopment agreement, because I think that's critical language. And in the redevelopment agreement in section one point one nine, I won't read all of it, we, we went over some of the language and talking about reasonable good efforts, but it says reasonable good efforts shall, shall mean. It doesn't say may mean, it says shall mean. So, this is, we're committed to this. That the developers shall include in all bid packages or requests for proposals a provision that each contractor, construction manager, and subcontractor shall be given an, shall be given an incentive or other priority in awarding a bid to. So, keep that in mind, they're being given an incentive in awarding a bid to hire supervisory labor and construction workers that perform any of the work, first from the city of Hammond. So, those companies get an incentive by employing first people from the city of Hammond, and then it goes on to say, and from, second, from Lake County. And also to have at least a majority, at least a majority of its non-supervisory, supervisory laborers and construction workers that perform the work hired from such areas, committed to the same priorities that I just read to you. That isn't just language, that isn't just some flowery legal language, that is binding language. That's language that has this organization and this group committed.
To making sure that they make every effort possible to ensure that residents and citizens of this community are hired first and foremost. Given the nature of the business, given the nature of the development, it's so difficult to predict and so difficult to ascertain specific percentages, but that's a commitment that can be made. And this isn't a commitment that's being made from somebody from California or somebody from Canada or somebody, or somebody from some other area. This is a commitment that's being made by one gentleman who stands right behind me, who lives in Hessville, whose business is in Hessville, another gentleman who lives in, in northwest Indiana for many years, myself, although I'm only their attorney, who was born and raised in Wimber and Hessville. That's the commitment that we make to this community, and we feel strongly about it. Councilman Markovich, your, your question is well-taken, I know you feel strongly about it. I think to that extent, we agree.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Just for the record. We received a listing of the jobs and the payment, and two of the outside companies, one is from Griffith Track Services, and the other one is Hassie Construction out of, out of Illinois. So, those are already construction companies that have, I guess, have been awarded contracts. Hopefully, you would be able to work with them, that they would be hiring Hammond people on these construction jobs, because like I pointed out in caucus, just like on the tollway, where they were just repainting and redoing the concrete, where you can drive by there and there's ten cars parked there, and seven out of the ten cars got Illinois plates. So, I would hope that you can relay this to Track Services of Griffith and Hassie Construction, that maybe they can forward a list of all the people that are working there and see how many Hammond people are working on that during this construction process.
I can assure you that.
We will relay that to them, and I can assure you that there is bound by this obligation as we have.
Thank you.
Mister President.
Councilman Inahosa.
This property there is.
It's kind of like east of the gun range, but does it take the property of the gun range or, or the gun range stays there? No, gun range stays, it's north of the tracks.
North of the tracks, it's north of the tracks, not south of the tracks. Our property is all north of the tracks. So, it's kind of like behind House Cat, the company that's, the existing company in San Michigan Avenue, House Cat?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, like right, right behind there and I would hear.
That's Hammond led, they are the group that committed to purchase two million dollars of the bond. They did, they committed Hammond, they've been here in Hammond, I believe, for twenty-five years. They've done this commitment to the city of Hammond. Quite frankly, I, I know that Councilman Markovich made comments about Reliable Rail today, but we've been working with the city for more than two years, and Hammond led made it clear to the city of Hammond that they would never sell their land unless the project was good for the city. And they would not have sold it to us but for the city going to Hammond led and saying, this is a project that the city really wants. And so Hammond led's made a huge commitment to the community by going ahead and agreeing to purchase the bond, or a majority of it. That's the blue building you're talking about. Is, is there also?
Would be an entrance through Michigan Avenue as well?
Yes. Development agreement we talked about last time. Unit train repair company, their entryway will be there by Central Rent-A-Cranes, there'll be minimal traffic there. We've asked you as part of the development agreement to work with Indot and put a light on twenty right past the curve, and we have agreed as a company to do the acceleration, deceleration lane. Our semi trucks coming out of the warehouse will turn east towards Klein, and that's where we want the red light. So, the majority of the logistics traffic will come out of the site on twenty. It'll never affect the Hessville neighborhood. That's one of the things we committed to with the city when we first started this project. The mayor made it clear to us, he didn't ever want any traffic to come south of the bridge where the IHB is, and so we've committed that with all vendors, with the tenants on the property. Our design provides for all traffic to turn north, use twenty to Klein, from Klein to hit both the toll road and eighty ninety-four. And then, of course, another.
Concern that we talked about earlier in a previous ordinance revision was that the, there was a concern about the train traffic.
That goes through Hessville, they will not be using those tracks, they'll be coming underneath Klein Avenue from the Gary side, is that where they're going to be entering through? They'll, they'll be coming both from east and west, but that is the greatest separated corridor, that's where the city has built a bridge over every one of those crossings. So, the trains utilizing our facility will not affect any of the active crossings whatsoever. That was a part of, biggest part of the point.
Any other discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. Any motion to go back to regular business?
Some would say.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Inahosa, all is in favor?
I have.
Both. Back to regular business. Any other discussion on fifteen twenty-three? Carmen roll call vote on fifteen twenty-three.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Yulaki?
Yes.
Higgs? Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Ordinance fifteen twenty-three passes, nine zero.
Fifteen twenty-four, an ordinance vacating a portion of one hundred and tenth street lying between Fifth Avenue and Indianapolis Boulevard in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Move for final passage of fifteen dash twenty-four. Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Patel, the final passage of fifteen twenty-four, is there any discussion?
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Request for vacating three hundred seventy-six feet to help with new and early development of roads in the Miranda Development Area.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call on fifteen twenty-four.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Yulaki?
Yes.
Higgs? Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Ordinance passes, eight zero, one absent.
Fifteen twenty-five, an ordinance vacating a portion of Public Alley located between one hundred and fourteenth Street and Staten Avenue in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Move for final passage of fifteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by. Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Patel, final passage of fifteen twenty-three, is there any discussion?
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Vacating 162 feet of alleyway that runs through the property that will be under development and the alley will remain open for use. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Carman roll call vote on 1525.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Yewacki?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes, 1525 passes, nine zero.
1526, an ordinance vacating a portion of Fifth Avenue, more or less, lying between 112th Street and Indianapolis Boulevard in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman McCollensky?
Final passage of 15 dash 26.
Second. Motion by Councilman McCollensky, second by Councilman Vitale, final pass of 1526, is there any discussion? Mr. Chairman? Councilman McCollensky?
This is the vacating of around- Eight hundred fifty or so feet to allow for more orderly and better use of land running Indianapolis Boulevard for commercial development. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Carman roll call on 15.6.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Yewacki?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes, 1526 passes, nine zero. I believe that concludes our ordinances. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
1527, an ordinance amending ordinances 9207, 8880, 8942, 8091, 9116, 9072, 2907, and 2196, sorry, 9124, creating a voluntary retirement program in 2015 for certain eligible employees of the city of Hammond.
Mr. President?
Councilman Vitale?
Move for first and second reading of the council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Higgins, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgins?
Let me add a sponsor.
Two way, Councilman Higgins is co-sponsor. Any other discussion?
President?
Councilman Vitale?
This voluntary retirement program will be extended for a limited period of time 2015 and will not be offered again, at least for the next two years. Pay is the same as it was prior to 2013 when it came out. Requirement is no later than Tuesday, September 1st, signed and fired through December 31st and by, you cannot withdraw after Tuesday, September 1st, 2015.
Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both, first and second passed.
1528, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514 for property commonly known as 828 114th Street, Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman McCollensky?
I move that 15 dash 28 pass through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman McCollensky, second by Councilman Vitale, for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, is there any discussion? Mr. Chairman? Councilman McCollensky?
There is a small portion of the property that is still zoned residential and this is a commercial development consequently in the land that's residential, has to be reclassified and that's why this ordinance is moving forward.
Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both, first and second passed. Moving on to resolutions.
ER, dash 14, resolution to Hammond County Council, setting in honorary street designation in honor of Councilwoman Kathleen Tassellis.
Mr. President?
Councilmember? Councilman Emerson?
I move for passage of resolution 15 R, dash 14.
Second. Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Vitale for a final- Passage of resolution 15 R 14, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
I was approached by a number of people, including Kathy's mother, and I know a lot of the council members have worked with her. This resolution, as stated, is to have an honorary street, Oakdale 7300 to 7600 blocks, that's the street Kathy grew up on. Her service to the community has been exemplary before she passed away too soon, some would say. I only knew her as a friend and she was a friend. I served briefly, or a few years, anywhere in the Kiwanis Club with her. And what's not in the resolution, and Kay wrote a great biography of Kathy, is that, you know, we worked together at the school city for a few years, but I know that other members of this council, several of you worked with her on the council and I was not on the council then, so I'm very, very happy to sponsor this resolution. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman? Councilman McCollensky?
I do have the opportunity to work with Kathleen on the city council and- Enjoyed working with her, I request to be put on as a co-sponsor, please.
She had Councilman McCollensky as a co-sponsor, any other discussion? Mr. Chairman? Councilman Markovich?
Usually when they do a street, they just do a block, here we're doing several blocks, so is that an error or-
Usually it's just the one block where she grew upon. I know where we just did it for, well, person wasn't dead, but Father Calick, it was like the one block where he lived and that was it. I mean, there's like four, five blocks, north and south, that were Father Calick grew up, but they just did the one block. Here we're asking for a whole street, so I was just wondering if that was an error on your part, or if you just meant to do the 173rd Street, I guess that's where she lived on the corner there.
Mr. President? Councilman Emerson?
I don't, I'm not sure, I'm looking at other blocks when we've done memorial streets. What comes to mind is Corporal Hernandez on River Drive and that is, I believe, two and a half blocks. I also believe in the third district sergeant Rojas's Carroll Street honorary street, I believe that's more than a block.
Okay, well, any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgins?
I had the pleasure of learning Mr. Blackwell on last weekend, we only dedicated one block. Certainly, I mean, it's up to discretion of the council, but the dedication was on Friday, it was only the one hundred block apart, and we also have another dedication, it's only one block, but it's to the council's discretion and my colleagues as to how they want to handle it.
Mr. President?
Councilman Vines?
I did not have the pleasure of working with Kathy on the council, but I am proud to say that she was my friend. Kathy is a, was a lifetime resident of the city of Hammond and the block of Oakdale on which she lived. I think it's completely appropriate to have the three blocks that are mentioned because I'm sure that on her way to Gavitt or on her way to anything else that she did in the city of Hammond, that she traveled those blocks on Oakdale, so I would be in favor of keeping the resolution as it is.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
Just for a point of clarification, Councilwoman Vines just said 173rd Street's the corner where she lived, the other two blocks are going south at a dead end to the Borman Expressway, so she wouldn't have walked that way to go to Gavitt.
Well, excuse me, actually, she grew up on 175th and Oakdale, if you want to be specific.
Any other discussion? President? Councilman Vitale?
I'd like to be a-
Councilman Vitale as a co-sponsor?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
If you would add me as well?
Councilwoman Vines as a co-sponsor and also myself. Any other discussion? Carman roll call vote.
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Yewacki?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes, resolution 15 R 14 passes, nine zero. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgins?
We see the correspondence, this is to whom it may concern, my name is Ashley Spann, I'm a resident of Hammond, Indiana, currently enrolled at Central State University in Whifford Forest, Ohio. I ended my first semester as a straight A and a 4.0 GPA, ended my second semester at a 3.8, a cumulative 3.9 GPA. I am seeking some assistance or scholarship opportunities. I am considered a first generation and a non-traditional college student, I need help financially regarding school. I served six years in the Indiana Army National Guard, military police officer, and I was told throughout my mater-
Motion.
Here, excuse me, what's, I can't even come out. Matillary, it won't come out for some reason, I don't know, military career, that the government is going to pay for my education, I relied on that. This is one of the main reasons I joined. Unfortunately, I am in a situation where school is not paid for, though was honorably discharged due to the, my end of service contract. I have fulfilled all duties necessary, but now I do not qualify for the Montgomery GI bill. I was misinformed and misunderstood the terms of my contract. I went through the VA and applied for my benefits and was declined twice. I contacted VA, Congressman Pete Biskowski, both informed me that I was not eligible and did not qualify the GI bill, chapter 33, or the 1606, because I did not buy into the GI bill when the first, when I first joined and became, and because I did not serve at least two years active duty. I really need help with tuition for school. Everywhere I turn seems to hit the dead end. My biological parents are not in my life, never was due to drug abuse and alcoholism. My grandmother, who raised me and my brother, is old, she does not work and cannot provide for my financially, for me financially. She did not acquire a high school diploma or GED. I worked even since I was able to and did not know that I wanted to do post-high school graduation. I, I turned to go to the school, but I tried to go to school, but I just was not focused. I graduated in 2009 with a Core 40 diploma and was also a part of the Century 21 Scholarship Program, which I did not take advantage of, neither benefit. I am the, now older and how, what I want, now I know what I want to do as far as my career. I am enrolled in a four-year accredited institution of higher learning. I am in an undergraduate, undergraduate business program, I am studying marketing and international business. I really need help with tuition for school. I tried to apply for personal loans, but no one in my family can co-sign and my credit is dead, therefore, I'm in a rat's, rich, excuse me. Other than God, I do not know where else to turn. I know this is something my parents should be helping me with, but they are both absentees. I really tried hard for myself and my financial aid does not cover the entire cost, I'm asking for help financially. If you know any scholarships, fellowships, grants, internships, or anything that is available, resource, please let me know. Some people, some help is better than no help. My education is very important to me, thank you for reading, feel free to contact me personally if you have any questions, contacts, or concerns. Sincerely, Ashley Spann, 2766642.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgins?
I want to take the time out to express my concern with the recent incident that occurred, not in my district, but in another one of the districts in the city of Hammond, and it was one of a relative of mine. And the ongoing killing that's taking place in Hammond has to stop. So I'm hoping that in some form or fashion that we can unite as a community and speak to these issues, because it makes no sense to kill and take one someone's life, especially at the age of 20, which he would have been 21 this week. Certainly, I would hope that the crime watchers in the community would take a conscientious effort in addressing this concern throughout the entire city. Put the guns down, that's all I ask, it makes no sense, put the guns down.
Any other new and unfinished business?
President?
Councilman Mr. Chairman?
The motion, Hammond City Council, send a letter to prosecutor for retardation, respect for punishment for-
The railroad, blocking crossings.
Second. Motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Emerson, to send a letter on our railroad crossings, makes a bill for Hessville area, all is in favor?
Mr. President?
Councilman Markovich?
Probably a CC for that, it should go to Police Officer Pat Vicary.
He was in charge of enforcement, probably a copy to the law department also. It's my understanding that they do file tickets or whatever and all of that and I guess that they're settled with a big group all at once and that's what happens to that effect. Whether the prosecutor pursues it or not, I guess that's another thing, but I guess they have a settlement conference where they take all these different tickets, group them together and they come up with a settlement conference then, but do whatever you want to do. But the law department and Vicary probably should get a CC on that letter.
You ladies got that?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgins?
Also, that letter should go to our judge, and recently I brought that up at Board of Works meeting about the train sitting, especially in the Hessville section of the city, near Kennedy Avenue, it's just ridiculous. They sit there for two, three hours, if someone is in dire urgency to get to the hospital, God forbid, they'll probably end up passing away, because the trains literally just sit there and they don't move for hours and you have to find an alternate route to go around and it's just ridiculous and it's been going on for quite some time. So I'm hoping some, something can happen to correct this issue, because it's really sad.
Okay, all is in favor, send a letter? Both, back to the board, any other unfinished business? Councilman McCollensky?
I'd like to make a motion for 15 dash 22, capital D, to consider for July 13, 2015.
Motion by Councilman McCollensky, second by Councilman Vitale for a letter, third consent on the council, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Thank you, Councilman Calwinski, I couldn't get a word in-
Next question.
I did want to announce that the league- Um, I did want to announce that, um, the League of Women Voters is going to host the two thousand and fifteen naturalization ceremony on Saturday, July fourth, six P.M. at the Wolf Lake Pavilion. Um, Judge Radovich will preside, and the speakers will be Congressman Pete Viskowski, Mayor McDermott, and I've been honored to, uh, ask to speak once again this year. Um, uh, as I said, I had the honor of speaking at last year's naturalization ceremony, and it's really quite moving to see people from all over the world and from all walks of life who are proud to be called, um, an, uh, an American. These are people who want the responsibility of being a citizen of these United States and are proud to stand and put their hand over their heart and pledge allegiance to this great country of ours. So I invite everyone to come out, that is the Fourth of July, uh, six P.M. at the Wolf Lake Pavilion, and this will be the two hundred and thirty-ninth celebration of our country's independence, so I invite you all to come. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I would like to announce that, uh, Hammers for Hearts is in town. Uh, if any of you, um, are, or if anyone has not heard about Hammers for Hearts, they are a faith-based group of youth who, uh, and adult volunteers who, uh, come from all over the country, pay their own way to come to Hammond, Indiana, to perform hands-on home repair, repair projects for elderly, disabled, and low-income residents. Um, right now, as we speak, approximately a hundred and fifty volunteers are at, uh, Hammond High, uh, they are sleeping there, they're eating there, and showering there, and, uh, in about a half an hour, they will begin their devotions. Um, if anyone has an opportunity to, uh, go over to Hammond High, the auditorium, and, uh, and just observe their devotion, um, it is truly inspiring to see young people, um, being directed by God, and having God as a purpose in their life. Um, uh, every night, there is a hospitality group that, um, hosts the volunteers. Uh, tonight, crime watch happened to, uh, be the hospitality hosts, I'm sure hostesses... Um, uh, for the group, tomorrow night is a, uh, a group of youth, I'm not sure who's there Thursday and Friday, uh, the Hammond City Council is going to be represented as hospitality hosts. Uh, Councilman Markovich, Councilman Spitali, and myself, uh, are going to tend to the hospitality needs of, uh, this group of really fine young people. Uh, if you see a Hammers for Hearts, um, excuse me, if you see a Hammers for Hearts sign in front of, uh, someone's house, stop by, say hello, thank these young people for coming to our fine city and doing the work that they are doing, so thank you very much.
Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Well, I would certainly, uh, say thank you for that, uh, point of information, Councilwoman Vines, because I was not, I'm aware that Hammond is our, I didn't know...
Where they were stationed at, and that the council, I, uh, no one extended the invitation for all the councilmen, but I understand, you just stated, Councilman Spitali, Markovich, and you are gonna be doing a hospitality, uh, uh, giveaway or, uh, presentation to those individuals who have, uh, are gonna assist, uh, with the Hammers for Hearts throughout the city, so I certainly, uh, appreciate that information, and I certainly will try to reach out to those individuals, uh, probably this evening, because seeing that I have, uh, quite a few things going on this week, I'll try to reach out to them this evening and just say thank you for, uh, giving a hand, so...
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Vines.
Uh, here, Councilman, he's asked me, and he, uh, grabbed, uh, volunteers, so I seen here for a meal, I, uh, he ran... Interested. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs, this is, okay, we're not gonna get order, order. I'm president here, and I will...
I understand, but...
We're not gonna get in a shouting match like one that went on two weeks ago.
There's no shouting match, all I'm simply stating my point of clarity, and the fact is, I didn't receive this letter, so if I can't, didn't receive it, I can't respond to it, so...
Thank you. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
And certainly, no one's interested in getting a shouting match, but I'm certainly gonna speak to anyone that has the tendency to say something that's not appropriate, not addressed in a professional manner, so not to say that it hasn't, but in the future, that's the way it's gonna be.
Any new, any other new unfinished business? New unfinished business is not closed. Holy expression, the only speaker of the evening, Mr. George Sciallo.
We're never gonna say anything, but I would hope... That you would look to your authority, under Roberts' rules, or the law, or otherwise, and stop all this bickering, Mr. President, uh, it's getting way out of line and stupid.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, no.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman, I hope those in favor?
Aye.
They can adjourn.